Good point. He hasn't said that, but good point. He's got such a great attitude.
All right, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the Oakdale City Council, December 10th, 2024. Sarah, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Inge Britson?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Morecambe?
Here.
Councilmember Willenbring?
Here.
Mayor Zabel?
Here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a lot on our agenda tonight, so let's get after it. First up is approval of the agenda. Councilmembers, we have a slightly amended version in front of us. Can I get a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. Next up is our favorite thing every year, our Truth in Taxation hearing. This is a state requirement that all cities have to do, but a very good requirement, one of the few good requirements they give us. But it's an opportunity for our Finance Director, Kyle Stasak, to walk us through the budget. Kyle, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So, yes, per Minnesota state statutes, cities with a population over five-
Hang on. Jim, do I have to officially open, or is that after the presentation?
You can do the presentation first.
Sorry, Kyle. Go ahead. We only do this once a year. I don't remember what we do, so take it away. Thank you.
Yes, so cities with a population over 500 are required to hold a public meeting to discuss the budget levy. The goal of this Truth in Taxation meeting is to enhance transparency and public engagement with regards to property taxes. The Truth in Taxation meeting follows the approval of the proposed levy. This was approved at the September 10th City Council meeting. And with that, it was approved for a 6.11% increase, the levy, for 2024 to 2025. And this was used to generate the proposed tax statements that were mailed out last month to taxpayers. The proposed levy, once set, can only be decreased prior to final approval. Tonight, the proposed levy tonight has since been decreased to 5.9% increase from 2024 for this presentation and council's consideration. And then I encourage the public to go online for more detail, including this PowerPoint, the digital budget book, or contact the Finance Department directly. Finalized in November of 2024 by the City Council and to be incorporated immediately and going forward. The City of Oakdale Strategic Plan starts with the mission to provide high-quality, reliable services and foster a safe, clean, and welcoming community. The city has identified the following three strategic directions: engaging people to co-create our story, positioning Oakdale for continued success in a rapidly changing world, and empowering our organization to meet evolving community expectations. Please see oakdaleminnesota.gov, the website for full details, including the strategic plan document. Here are some common property tax terms that will come up throughout the presentation. First one, market value. This is an assessed value determined by Washington County, their assessor's office. Market value is determined as the usual selling price at the time of assessment. Jumping down to pay values, this signifies the property values used on the proposed and the final statements, the final tax statements. The pay 2025 values are based on the 2024 assessor's report from Washington County. And then to the last one here, the median value residential property. This term will come up throughout the presentation. It's a commonly-used sample property for property taxes and their effects. Due to the nature of property value, the data is having outliers both small and large. The median value is considered a stronger representative of the data than the mean or average. Here is a general property tax timeline, starting with, I'll just jump to September here, when the proposed levy was, a sale for Oakdale was approved on September 10th. And then November, proposed tax statements were mailed out. And then December, final levy set, which is the purpose of this meeting. Why do property taxes change? There are many reasons outside of the local tax jurisdictions authority that influence property taxes, including fluctuations in market values, changes in non-levy revenue sources, levies at other jurisdictions, and changes in state or federal mandates. For the proposed levy and assessment, some highlights: total citywide assessed property values up 1.5% from 2024, with the apartment classification increasing about 22%, while residential decreased about 1%. The estimated median residential property is 337,800, which is down 1.6%. This property, this median property, has increased 75% since 2014. Estimated city tax rate of 41.21%. And then the proposed 2025 levy is a 5.9% increase from 2024. This includes the general fund portion, capital improvement, and debt service. Highlights for the budget connected to that levy: there's an investment in city-operated leasing, including funding for one new licensed sergeant. There are two replacement squad vehicles for the patrol division, one unmarked traffic enforcement vehicle, and one replacement vehicle for community service officers. There's a commitment to the full career modeled fire department, including one new fire marshal along with the replacement of Fire Engine 2. There's investment in city facilities, trails, and parks, including internal funding of vehicles and equipment, eliminating equipment certificate debt. There's an annual replacement of one existing playground structure. There's increased support for the growing city, including one full-time equivalent increase for the finance clerk and human resource generalist. And then this budget and related levy reduced the debt levy for the fifth consecutive year into the lowest level since 2017. Valuation changes and tax impacts. Washington County provides our assessing services for the city. Minnesota statutes establish the requirements for the assessment. The assessed market values established through the 2024 assessor's report are based on real estate market trends from October 1st '22 through September 30 '23. This 24 assessed value is then used for the taxes payable for 2025. Here's a table that summarizes Oakdale's values by property type. And this information is from that Washington County assessor's report. Total value, so if you look on the far right, the last two columns, we have the total value and the total value change. You see about 4.2 billion in total value with a 1.5% change the previous year. And then columns three and four from the right, we see the reasons for the change. We got total new construction increased, the value about 115 million, while the existing property decreased about 53 million. Here is a comparison of Oakdale to Washington County and the composition of that market value by property type. Washington County has a higher concentration of residential and agricultural value, while Oakdale has apartment and commercial industrial. And here's another comparison with Oakdale, their 2025 pay values versus 2024. Just some minor changes from the previous year with the composition, a slight increase in apartment with the decrease in residential. Here's a chart on the change in just the residential assessed values for pay 2025. This info is from the assessor's report showing the percent change in residential parcels by 5% increments. Note that there are approximately 9,700 residential parcels in Oakdale per that report. Similar graph to the previous slide, this one compares Oakdale with Washington County. Oakdale's in green, Washington County in gray. Pretty similar, just some slight changes between the two. Here is another line graph. This is on the median residential market values, historical trends, showing from 2008, it was, the median residential property is valued about 222,000. And 2025, on the far right, is at 337,800. And then here's another comparison with other larger cities within Washington County, along with the county median itself. So box in orange is Oakdale. So from '24 to '25, as mentioned, the median value decreased about 1.6% or $5,500. The county median is just to the right of it, decreased 1.9% or 7,700. And here we have a heat map on the percentage change in that median value property for the 10 larger cities in Washington County. Oakdale in bold in the middle. Just to highlight a few of the more recent years, 19.2% increase in value in '21 to '22, 9% '22 to '23, and then a decrease of 1.6 this year. And here's another heat map. This one, it shows the residential parcel count. And kind of relative to that previous graph, you know, Oakdale in the middle as well. This shows that the value increase is seen on that previous slide. Were primarily due to housing stock appreciating. We see housing stocks beginning to add up in the later years here from '21 through '24. And note that this will differ from actual amounts with that Washington County assessor data is a little bit behind that year or so. But this is what is used for property taxes. Now, here we have a comparison with the larger Washington County cities once again, and the proposed taxes on that median-valued residential property. Oakdale's in green, third one from the bottom. With that decrease in value of 1.6% and the 5.9% levy increase, city tax is estimated to be 1,326. Oakdale city taxes compare well to the other cities in Washington County. And note, we'll dive into this a little further on a later slide. And also to note, the other cities noted this is the proposed amounts that were issued back in September, which may decrease prior to final approval. Now, we'll go through the proposed budget and further on that property tax levy. We break the levy down into three primary components. The general portion, this is approximately 15 million of the levy, with an increase of 5.5% from the prior year. This portion of the levy supports the general fund, which is the city's operating fund. This includes the city's administration, police and fire, public works excluding utilities, and then the recreation. The second piece, the capital improvement plan, this is approximately just under 2 million with a 16.6% increase from the prior year. This levy supports our capital improvement plan and allows the city to issue less debt, including the elimination of equipment certificates. This saves the city money on interest and debt issuance costs. And this portion of the levy flows directly into the 2025 through 2029 capital improvement plan. And the final component to touch on here, the debt levy, approximately just over 2 million, and it's with a slight decrease from the prior year. This levy is for payments on the city's general obligation bonds. This has decreased each of the last five years due to long-term planning. And then looking at in total, just over 19 million for the levy with that 5.9% increase. And the next few slides, we'll go into each of those components separately. All right, here we have the budgeted general fund revenues. Far right, we have the 2025 budget for the revenues, about 5.2% increase. The top number, this is where the ad valorem taxes, this is where the property tax levy flows into, that $15 million levy. And then just to highlight some of the changes throughout here, there's a decrease in permits. This is due to anticipated development trends in 2025. There's a decrease in intergovernmental due to one-time public safety aid in prior years. And then there's an increase in other financing sources due to the use of fund balance. And a big portion of this is related to that prior public safety aid received and now used to fund officers. Here is the 2025 budgeted general fund expenditures. The far right column is the 25 budget. It's balanced budget, 5.2% increase in expenses, expenditures. The primary increase is due to personnel costs, including the prior mention, that new police sergeant, the fire marshal, and then that HR generalist slash finance clerk positions. Here we have the capital improvement plan portion. So the city annually prepares a five-year capital improvement plan and a 10-year vehicle and equipment replacement plan. Collectively, the CIP. There are many types of funding sources used throughout the CIP, including debt issuance, park dedication, municipal state aid, the Minnesota Pollution Control Settlement funding, and then a property tax levy. So going down to the table at the bottom here, this is how we split out the capital improvement plan portion. The largest portion, the vehicle and equipment, as mentioned previously, this increase is due to replacing equipment certificate debt and foregoing the interest and debt issuance costs on these purchases. The three other portions are the street improvement, the park improvement, and the municipal building. Then to go over some of the highlights for 2025 in that capital improvement plan, there are over 47 million in capital expenditures planned. Significant projects include the public works and police buildings, the annual street reconstruction, Fire Engine 2 replacement, and the drinking water settlement, well replacements, and decommissions. To that final component, the debt portion, the debt levy, just over 2 million to its lowest level since 2017, as shown in this trend bar graph. Council continues to take action to reduce the debt levy through long-term planning, including the elimination of the equipment certificates, along with looking for other sources of revenue, such as the local sales tax for the public works and police building projects, to keep this as low as possible. Now, here's another, here's a sample city tax calculation based on the levy, along with the updated- so this calculation is based on that median value residential property, comparing 2024 final to 2025 estimated. So with the 5.9% levy increase, his estimated taxes are $1,326, which is an increase of $41, or about 3.2%. And this equates to about $3.50 per month additional. Taking that estimated annual tax of $1,326 over 12 months is about $110 a month. So that $110 a month is allocated across the general fund, capital improvements, and debt services. And to highlight a few, so of that $110, about $29 for police, $17 for public works, $16 for fire EMS, and $11 each for debt service and capital. Now, we'll go through a sample taxation statement that would have been received in the mail last month. This is from Washington County, delivered after November 10th and before November 24th. The notices include parcel-specific proposed taxes and then by the jurisdiction. And on the right of this slide, you can see the example. Diving into it a little more, in the top right of that tax statement, we see a top-line item, the estimated market value. This market value, that's that Washington County assessor determined value. And starting with that, we take any, it's reduced for any exclusion or deferrals, including the homestead exclusion, the second-line item. And then after exclusion or deferrals, we have the taxable market value. The class line item, the very last one here on that example. The class rate is determined by state statutes, and that is applied. The class in this example is residential homestead. So with that, it brings us to the tax capacity. And then to dive, so that homestead exclusion number, just to kind of focus on that one a little bit. This exclusion directly reduces the taxable market value for property classified as homestead. And a couple things to point out on this one. As you see in the table here, I have, we have 2025 and 2024 calculated. So first to focus on 2025, the new max exclusion is $38,000. And that is on a $95,000 estimated market value parcel. So with that, for that example, with the estimated market value of $95,000, less the exclusion of $38,000, we come to a taxable value of $57,000. And then, so the update from '24 to '25, as you can see, the exclusion was increased from $30,000 max to a $38,000 max. And then along with that, 2024 phased out at about $413,000, whereas 2025 phases out at about $517,000. And yeah, as mentioned, this exclusion directly lowers taxable value for eligible properties. Back to the statement, so looking at the body of the tax statement. The notice includes the proposed taxes by jurisdiction. These levies set can be reduced but not increased prior to final approval. It includes the contact info and the Truth in Taxation meeting location, date, and time. Then on the back of the notices, there's supplemental information. Supplemental information for the county, all cities and all school districts within the county. It includes a certified levy for the current year taxes, so the 2024 column. We have the proposed levy for the following year, 2025, along with the percentage increase-decrease. And then as noted, so Oakdale approved on September 10th, a 6.1%, which is included about 2/3 of the way down. You can see Oakdale, it's at the 6.1. And it's since been decreased to 5.9% for this presentation. With those proposed taxes for the county, school district, and other districts, here we have a split of where each dollar tax paid goes. 40% to the school district. And this is on the median value residential property once again. So 40% to the school district, 35% to the city, 20% to the county, and the remaining to other various jurisdictions. And we'll touch on a few property tax relief programs. The State of Minnesota offers two primary relief programs, the regular property tax refund and the special property tax refund. These are filed along with personal taxes. There's a number of eligibility factors for each. Please consult the state website, listed at the bottom here, for more information. And the other one to highlight, the Senior Citizen Property Tax Deferral Program. It's another State of Minnesota program. Once again, multiple eligibility requirements. And the link to the state website for more information is included at the bottom here. Then action items for tonight. So conduct the Truth in Taxation meeting, allow for public input and comments, and then consider resolutions adopting the 2025 tax levies, related budgets, along with the CIP, and authorizing the 25 projects. Then the last bullet point here, the city's digital budget book. This budget is completely online and includes in-depth details for each department within each of the funds, including, in addition to debt service information, the capital improvement plan. Please visit, if any questions, you may contact the Finance Department. With that, this is, I just wanted to show what the, with the front page of the, or just run through quick the front page of the online digital budget book. As you can see, the dropdown at the top, and we, a lot of time and effort has gone into this. And we'd love to walk anybody through this. With that, I'll turn it over to Mayor.
Thank you, Kyle. In one minute, I'm gonna go ahead and open the Truth in Taxation Public Hearing, which offers anybody an opportunity to step up to the podium and speak on this. A few things first. Kyle, our Finance Director, just covered a lot of information. And it's the unintended consequence of this meeting every single year. One thing we want to stress with everybody in the audience and everybody at home is, if you ever have any questions about anything that was in those slides, where to find OpenGov, our financial transparency tool, please reach out to staff, reach out to council members, reach out to me, anybody. We are happy to help direct that. Gonna be honest, if it's questions, we're probably gonna give them to Kyle. But there's a lot of information out there. Oakdale has stressed for a number of years, we have absolutely nothing to hide. Tools like OpenGov have made our books even more transparent, providing a real-time look at our books. And we want people to take advantage of it and look at it. So please feel free, at any point, reach out to any of us or to staff. We would really love to hear from you. But at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. As I mentioned before, this is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to step up to the podium. Please state your name and address to the record. If you could begin your comment by maybe honing in on which piece of the presentation you'd like to speak to, whether it's the property taxes, the budget, city debt. If you have questions about your assessed value, I saw our county commissioner walk in. You can talk to him. There he is. Hey, Stan. The county assesses property value, so that's their responsibility. So feel free to grab him and offer those comments. But any of those areas, budget, taxes, et cetera, please feel free, step up to the podium. Come on, don't be shy. Going once, going twice. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the Truth in Taxation public hearing. We don't have an action specific to that. It's just we roll right into the next two items. Kyle, do you have any presentations or anything additional to say about the property tax levy and budget?
Nothing further, Mayor.
City Minister Volkers, is there anything you would like to say about your amazing staff that have guided us through this process for, it feels like, many, many months?
Well, you just said it. The council, you know, went through a lot of iterations of this budget this year. Staff went through a lot. Everybody worked very hard. We always do. But it's, we feel like we provided as good of a product as we can, given the limitations. And I think it was a team effort. There's no one person. Kyle led the effort. Thank goodness for Kyle. But you all and the rest of the staff are very involved. So thank you for everybody's hard work on this.
Thank you. Chris, councilmembers, let's roll right into that first action.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2024-114, adopting the 2025 property tax levy and 2025 general fund, special revenue fund, debt service fund, and enterprise fund budgets.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion of second. Final comments? I will make one comment. Chris said it so well. You know, this is a very lengthy process that every city, but Oakdale especially, goes through. And, you know, it's something that Oakdale, through our culture, has said we want to take little bites at throughout the year. As things shift throughout the year, we want to be nimble to make those changes as we go. But the big takeaway I want, I hope residents see in all of this, is some very big trends that we're pushing forward as a city. Investing in our staff. The job market is incredibly tight in every sector, in every geography, everywhere. So we're making those investments in our people because they truly provide outstanding service to our community. That is a top priority for us. For a number of years now, transitioning away from debt has been a very big priority. We should all be incredibly proud that, for the fifth straight year, the interest payment on our credit cards is going down. Yes, that has required that we collect more in property taxes to pay for things like vehicles and equipment. But making those investments and not having to pay interest, especially at the rates we've been seeing the last few years, over the course of 10 years, is to the financial benefit of our community. Also, investing in our residents. Those, I mentioned those services that are incredibly important, but all the way down to making sure we have outstanding roads for our residents to get to work and take their kids to sporting activities and get groceries. Making sure we have that, those city services in place to make Oakdale a tremendous place to work, live, and play is the cornerstone of everything we do here. So we cover a lot of numbers. We cover it very quickly. We say numbers like $23 million. That can sound incredibly scary, but for this city council for many, many years now and many, many years going forward, we're guided by these North Stars in our work to say, this is where we want to go forward because we think it makes the most sense for our community. So we appreciate everybody that has reached out to all of us over the course of a year, provided ideas, provided feedback on things that we've been talking about for a very long time. And we're excited to roll right into 2025. So we've had a motion. We've had a second. I've had my rambling. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the 2025 property tax levy and budget is adopted. We have one more action, the 2025 through 2029 capital improvement plan and VERF.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2024-115, approving the 2025 to 2029 capital improvement plan and authorizing fiscal year 2025 projects.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that is, resolution 2024-115 is adopted. One more action.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 to 2034 vehicle and equipment replacements.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Although, oop, any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the 2025 through 2034 VERF is approved. Opposed, and the 2025 through 2034 VERF is approved. Where'd Kyle go? Kyle, thank you. You have been a very steady hand in very frantic conversations over the last eight months. We appreciate everything you and the finance team have done to pull these documents together, to keep the lights on here. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is administering the oath of office to three police officers and a firefighter/paramedic. This is always a very special opportunity, or a very special occurrence in our city. All four of these individuals have successfully completed, Chris, I'm going to look at you, they've completed their one-year probationary period. So now we get to administer the oath of office and make them full-fledged officers and firefighter/paramedics in the city. We're going to shoo in our entire police force. Where did our chiefs go? Chief Newton, first. Could I have Andrew Ashley, Jeffrey Robinson, Daniel Rogers, and Michael Wallace come sit in the front row, please?
Are we all moving now, or?
Uh, I think you're fine to sit here.
Yeah, while I give you the oath of office and then we'll take photos.
Okay. Are we going to do photos one at a time?
We'll do, actually, yeah, we'll do photos after, I swear I'm rolling.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay.
Got a microphone for them to hold, otherwise it doesn't pick up. We're just going to get a picture, okay?
That's fine.
Just turn it around.
Yeah, okay.
We always do.
Could I have Andrew Ashley join me up here, please? All right, so for everybody in the audience, how do we usually do it? Do pictures after each individual one?
Yes, after each individual.
So I'm going to administer the oath of office for each officer and a firefighter/paramedic after each individual one. We'll invite your family to come up. Somebody will pin you, I believe, right, Chief? Yes? Where'd Chief Newton go? Where did Chief Newton go? Somebody will pin you and then invite anybody you would like up to take a group photo. And then, once we get through everybody, we'll invite up your respective departments to take a department photo. Sound like a plan? All right, I'm going to take a half step back, just want to make sure we get this. Go ahead and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Andrew Edward Ashley, do solemnly swear.
I, Andrew Edward Ashley, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully, justly, and impartially.
That I will faithfully, justly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of police officer.
Discharge the duties of police officer.
For the city of Oakdale, Minnesota.
For the city of Oakdale, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
He needs to come on up here and put on his pin. And then anybody you'd like to come up for a personal photo.
We'll just do one big one, then?
We'll do the entire police department at the end, yeah.
I was saying I have like a whole family here.
Yeah, family, yeah, everybody. All of it. Dave.
Get him up here.
Jeffrey, come on up. All right, what is the position between us? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jeffrey Lewis Robinson, do solemnly swear.
I, Jeffrey Lewis Robinson, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully, justly, and impartially.
That I will faithfully, justly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of police officer.
Discharge the duties of police officer.
For the city of Oakdale, Minnesota.
For the city of Oakdale, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Any other family members you'd like to take a photo?
Family?
Come on up. Thank you. Daniel. Daniel, go ahead and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Daniel Eric Rogers, do solemnly swear.
I, Daniel Eric Rogers, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully, justly, and impartially.
I will faithfully, justly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of police officer.
Discharge the duties of police officer.
For the city of Oakdale, Minnesota.
For the city of Oakdale, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you.
We have one challenge.
Michael. Your oath is longer.
Oh, great.
Oh, boy. Michael, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Michael William Wallace, firefighter/paramedic for the city of Oakdale.
I, Michael William Wallace, firefighter/paramedic for the city of Oakdale.
Will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Will support the Constitution for the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution for the State of Minnesota.
And the ordinances of the city of Oakdale.
And the ordinances of the city of Oakdale.
I will do my duty to the best of my ability.
I will do my duty to the best of my ability.
And serve my commanding officers and subordinates.
And serve my commanding officers and subordinates.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
I understand that there is a responsibility.
I understand there is a responsibility.
As a firefighter and paramedic.
As a firefighter and paramedic.
To serve with compassion.
To serve with compassion.
Dedication.
Dedication.
Honor.
Honor.
And integrity.
And integrity.
I will uphold the highest professional standards.
I will uphold the highest professional standards.
And proud traditions.
And proud traditions.
Of the Oakdale Fire Department.
Of the Oakdale Fire Department.
Congratulations. The entire fire department, council, the ticker on the back.
Yep, that'll work out.
Kevin will go in the middle.
Just make sure you can see the camera.
Wide angle lens.
You can't see Lori, she can't see you. That's the problem.
And the police department.
We don't want them to get away, though. We want them to stay.
Aren't they going upstairs?
You owe Jason Dom.
I'm making the chiefs do that.
Haven't had enough time tonight.
Good luck, Lori.
Wow.
Second row, maybe? Like you like each other.
Coffee, lay down in front.
All right, count to three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chris has it right there.
We're that into it over the past six years.
That's fire?
Stress scratches. It's awesome.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. I believe there's a reception upstairs, so please feel free to mosey on up there after we get through all of our fun business. I'm kidding. But we're going to go ahead and keep things rolling here. Next up is approval of minutes. We have two sets in front of us. First up, workshop meeting minutes, November 26, 2024. Council members, any changes or corrections? I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the workshop meeting minutes are adopted. Next up, regular meeting minutes from November 26, 2024. Council members, any changes or corrections? I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and those meeting minutes are approved as well. Next up, we have another public hearing in front of us. Do we have a staff presentation on?
No, I can do it.
Okay, City Minister Volkers, why don't you tee this up for us before we get into the public hearing?
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. Every year, we look at the fee schedule and we try to right-size it to the actual costs that we're not charging, so we're not charging, overcharging or undercharging. Things change, staff change, but we try to chew it up every year for the cost. This year, there's minimal changes, but there's some to make sure that we're in line with what the true cost is. So that is what's before you, the annual fee schedule with some changes noted and read, and then there's a final approval for the fee schedule, a clean copy attached to the agenda, and those will dictate all fees for the city of Oakdale during 2025.
Perfect. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, similar to before. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this agenda item specifically. Please feel free to step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and proceed with your comments. It's a mad rush, I love it. Saying no, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back for council consideration. Let's get in action and we can go from there.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt ordinance number 942, revising the fee schedule for 2025.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the ordinance 942 is adopted.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2024-118, authorizing publication of ordinance number 942 by title and summary.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and resolution 2024-118 is adopted. Next up is our open forum. Before we get to that, I have one presentation announcing our 2024 Volunteer of the Year, which is always very exciting. Each year, the city of Oakdale recognizes the invaluable contributions made by an individual or group with our Volunteer of the Year Award. Over the year, this, or over the years, this award's recipients have left a lasting mark on our community, from advocating for clean water, to supporting and leading area nonprofits, volunteering with our faith community, collecting toys and gifts for local families in need, and more. The qualifications to be named Volunteer of the Year is short. It begins with a love for Oakdale and a willingness to devote time and treasure to support our residents, businesses, and community. Our 2024 Volunteer of the Year is someone we all know and love, and someone we all admire. For many years now, she has led the Oakdale Chamber of Commerce's efforts to raise money for the Holiday Helping Hands Program and Scholarship Fund, organizing an always-successful annual golf tournament. As a board member for Carol Mathews Center for Children and Families, she has worked and supported the mission to supply this community with high-quality, affordable childcare, early childhood education, and family support. When the time came to transition Summerfest to a privately organized event, our Volunteer of the Year was one of six people who raised their hands to not only save this cherished summer celebration, but to help write an exciting new chapter for it as well. And in the process, has devoted hundreds, and hundreds, and hundreds, and hundreds of hours to making Summerfest a big success. On behalf of the residents and businesses of Oakdale, the Oakdale City Council is beyond honored to announce our 2024 Volunteer of the Year, Angie Prop. Come on down, Angie. Aren't you glad you're back from Mexico? Let's come on up.
That's right.
Why don't you stand, let's grab a picture. Come on, council.
I did not expect this, so thank you very much. I've...
Um, I've obviously lived in Oakdale for a very long time, and I've cared about this community for a very long time. Uh, I've been on the chamber for thirty years, and, um, I started when I was twelve, I promise. I, I wouldn't do it if I didn't care about this community, and I really, really do, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Angie, you must have an incredibly large fan club, because we had a lot of nominations with your name on it. So, to everybody that nominated for this year's award, thank you to all the nominees, and all the volunteers in our community. They do a ton of tremendous work, um, that often goes unseen, unrecognized. Um, they don't do it to get it splashed in the headlines, um, but when we do have the opportunity to shine some light on it, it's incredibly special. So congratulations, Angie. Uh, next up, consensus motions. Um.
We got.
Oh, open forum, we still have open forum. If there is anybody in the audience that would like to step up to the microphone and talk about anything that's on your mind, please feel free, name and address for the record. Um, the floor is open. Seeing none, we're gonna keep things moving, go into consensus motions. Council members, we have A through M in front of us. Are there any that council members would like to pull for individual consideration?
Yes, I'd like to pull consensus motion D.
I wonder why?
Here.
Every year, that's okay. Um, count, uh, any others for individual consideration? All right, can I get a motion to approve A through C and E through M as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve consensus motions A through C and E through M as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and those consensus motions are adopted. Uh, item D, Councilmember Workon, would you like to speak to that one?
Yes, I would like to abstain from voting on this, because once again, my son is one of the applicants to be an ice rink attendant for the City of Oakdale.
Always weird when a parent is hiring a child, so we appreciate you pulling this one out. All right, can I get a motion to approve consensus motion D as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve consensus D, consensus motion D as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstention.
All right, four to zero to one, all right. Uh, advisory boards and commissions, here's our opportunity to check in with them. Planning was the only one that met, Councilmember Ingerbrinson, you are their liaison.
Yep, just, uh, they had a, a, a small business, a small house business, and, uh, did a CUP for a, for an accessory building.
Sounds about right.
Yeah, sounds about right. Nothing, nothing too spectacular.
But very important work that they're doing all the same. All right, thanks Jake. Uh, a word of bid, we'll keep this rolling into a word of bid. We have two recommendations in front of us tonight, dealing with Water Tower Three. Brian, you have our very, very, very short staff presentation.
Yes, absolutely. Pursuant to council authorization, we did collect bids for the recoding of Water Tower Three, which is on Hallmark Avenue. We did get seven contractors that provided bids, uh, with the low bidder being Classic Manufacturing. Uh, the low base bid is one million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. They also provided a bid alternate of thirty-six thousand for an enhanced logo on the water tower. Um, that, the recommendation is to award the base bid, and a change order will be pursued for, uh, the logo once a decision is made. So with that, stand for any questions the council may have.
Council members, any questions for Brian? All right, I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-one-zero, including awarding the bid for city project U two twenty twenty-four dash zero-one, Water Tower Three reconditioning to Classic Protective Coatings Inc. in the amount of one million, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars, seven hundred and fifty dol- seven, one million, seven hundred and sixty-six, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
There we go. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, final conversation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-ten is adopted. Uh, one more action on this one.
Make a motion to authorize the city administrator to approve individual change orders up to twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, provided that the change order is within the project budget.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and that authorization is granted. Next, we'll roll into staff reports, community development, one item tonight. Community Development Director Gitzlov, welcome.
That's good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, just the one item tonight, the Norhard Apartment, Apartment Site Plan Amendment for a loading and unloading zone. This would be replacing two on-street parking spaces on Second Street North with a dedicated loading and unloading zone. Right now, our city code does require that, uh, loading be conducted, be conducted off-site. However, given that there's no feasible loading and unloading location for this use, um, with its, um, um, narrow setbacks, uh, staff is recommending, uh, approval of this DV, of this, uh, site plan, of this site plan deviation. Um, this is also an opportunity to clean up a couple other changes in the, in the site plan, one of those being a transformer that was placed within the right-of-way as the only feasible location on the east side of Henslow Avenue North, adjacent to a future city park. Screening has been identified as a reasonable solution to mitigate the aesthetic impact, and the developers agreed to establish an escrow, uh, in the amount of ten thousand dollars for screening of that transformer. So if I just go, I'll go to the site plan, uh, amendment resolution, just jump right down, there are, again, the three conditions. The loading and unloading zones should be used exclusively to serve commercial uses within the mixed-use building. Developers shall install signage and identify as the loading and unloading zone, and the developers shall establish the escrow in the amount of ten thousand dollars for screening of the transformer. Happy to answer any questions.
Council members, any questions for Andy? All right, I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-one-one, approving the amended site plan for Norhard Apartments, with conditions included in the attached resolution.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-one-one is adopted. Uh, engineering, I believe, thank you, Andy. Uh, next up is engineering, feasibility report for twenty twenty-five street reconstruction. Brian, welcome back.
Thank you. Uh, this is the report for the improvements associated with the neighborhood that is generally described as south of Sixth Street, west of Hadley Avenue, north of Hudson Boulevard, and east of Greenway Avenue. It involves about two and a half miles of street reconstruction, and about one mile of water main replacement. Uh, the report did provide an alternative estimate to replace additional water main. It is, uh, our conclusion that, uh, that can't be funded at this point, so the recommendation is to replace the water main consistent to what's reflected in the capital improvement program. Uh, the other portion of the improvement in the report was Hadley Avenue, and the estimate for Hadley Avenue uh, came in higher than what was budgeted for in the capital improvement program. So the recommendation is to remove the improvements associated with Hadley Avenue, and, uh, will, uh, reflect that in the revised CIP as a future project. The recommendation, then, is for the council to accept the fees of builder report, uh, minus the additional water main, and also the Hadley Avenue improvements, um, to authorize the preparation of plans as reflected in the feasibility report, minus the additional water main and Hadley Avenue improvements, and then to declare the cost to be assessed in ordering the improvements, uh, preparation of plans and specifications as so noted. Uh, with that, I'd stand for any questions the council may have.
Uh, council members, we chatted about this at workshop right before our meeting, but are there any additional questions for Brian? All right, let's get to a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-one-seven, accepting the feasibility report for city project R. Oh, jeez.
Devise language.
I, that was, I knew I was gonna miss that. Okay, sorry about that, we'll start over. Um, I will make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-one-seven, accepting the feasibility report for city project R twenty twenty-five dash zero-one, the twenty twenty-five street reconstruction, excluding the Hadley Avenue improvements, and the recommendation to replace additional water main beyond what is reflected in the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine capital improvement plan. Authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications, excluding the Hadley Avenue improvements and the additional water main replacement beyond what is reflected in the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine capital improvement plan, declaring the cost to be assessed, ordering preparation of proposed, um, assessment role, and establishing a public improvement and assessment hearing for January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM, or as soon afterwards as possible. Longest motion ever.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion and second, final conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-one-seven is adopted. Want to take that last item?
Yep, I make a motion to authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into a service contract with an engineering consultant for the preparation of plans and specifications.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, uh, final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that authorization is given. Thank you, Brian. Uh, tch, 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 recreation, Julie, come on down. We have a couple donations to accept. If you want to go ahead and just present both of them at the same time, and then we can take the actions together.
Perfect, sounds good, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, so tonight, I'm here to bring you donations, um, for the two events, Family Fun Flattables and the Oakdale Nature Preserve Five K. So there were five sponsors for the Family Fun Flattables, um, Oakdale Athletic Association, a thousand dollars. City Council candidates, Juan Escuval and Carrie Moore, five hundred. Marcus Theaters, three hundred. North Stars Skate School, East Metro Stars Youth Hockey Association, three hundred. And Parkview, Parkview Chiropractic, at three hundred dollars. Uh, the second donation is Larry and Vicky Everhard from the Everhard Group with Keller Williams, and they donated fifteen hundred dollars, which provided the race T-shirts for the Oakdale Nature Preserve Five K. And of course, a big thanks to all the sponsors. Without them, the events wouldn't be what they are, so thank you again.
Thank you, Julie. Um, I know I speak for the entire council, and I also thank those sponsors, um, very generous for them to make donations for these very, very popular events. They seem to keep growing, which is great, so, um, a big thank you to them. Uh, let's take the first resolution.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-one-two, accepting a donation from various sponsors in an amount totaling two thousand, four hundred dollars for sponsorship of the Family Fun Flattables event.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that resolution is adopted. Want to take the other one, Jake?
Yep, I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-one-three, accepting a donation from Larry and Vicky Everhard from the Everhard Group with Keller Williams in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for sponsorship of the Oakdale Nature Preserve Five K.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that donation is accepted as well. Thank you, Julie. Uh, next up is our opportunity to check in with our city attorney, Jim, anything for us tonight?
Mr. Mayor, in light of your agenda, I decided to take it easy on you tonight.
We appreciate that. Anybody have any questions for Jim? All right, Chris, administrator's report.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, City Council, um, end of the year, we had a big agenda, big items on the agenda, big support and big decisions, so thank you. Thank you to everybody's work throughout the year.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, council presentations, let's mix it up just a little bit tonight. Let me, let's go through announcements, events and everything, um, and then we will do recognition. Um, I see Commissioner Kurwaski's here, and then I'll let him go, and then I'll go do a little bit, and then Jake can have the final word. Does that work?
Yeah.
Cool. Um, does anybody have any general announcements that they'd like to share? Anything?
I just wanna congratulate everybody who had anything to do with the Aldi grand opening. It was fantastic, there was so much energy in, um, despite the cold, it was just fantastic, so congratulations to everybody.
Absolutely. Come on over here.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we've got a student here from St. Agnes coming to visit our city council, and I've been approached by students from North and Tartan and Scouts. Uh, any youth that's interested in local government or needs to come here for a class, please come. We're excited to have you and, and talk about the process.
Great.
Pretty boring?
If it is, this is our most exciting meeting of the year, so we can't help you any other time, so. Uh, a few announcements from me, um, Councilmember Moore touched upon it. Uh, we had a grand opening and ribbon cutting for Aldi last Friday, December sixth. It was a great event, oh my gosh, so many people, um, line wrapped around the building. Um, our community is so excited to have Aldi here, um, we encourage everybody, go check it out. Um, it is located at thirty-five oh four High Point Drive North, which is just north of Thirty-Fourth Street in the retail space, um, by the forefront, uh, Technology and Office Campus. A big welcome to Aldi, thank you for setting up shop here in Oakdale. Uh, Santa is coming to town on a decorated fire truck tomorrow, Wednesday, December eleventh, so bundle up. Ooh, it's gonna be cold tomorrow, woo. Does Santa ride on top of the fire truck, 'cause, burr. Um, but bundle up and stop by for a photo with Santa. He'll start at the North Fire Station, five thousand Hadley Avenue North, I think is the address, um, at six PM, and then he's gonna head south along Hadley Avenue with three more stops, the Discovery Center, Everly Park, and Stillwater Boulevard, before ending at City Hall around seven-thirty. So, um, feel free to come on out to any, any of those, I guess it's five total stops, um, and hang out with Santa. I think he's usually there about like fifteen, twenty minutes at each stop, um, and it ends here at City Hall around seven-thirty. So great opportunity to get some pictures, the fire truck is always decked out in lights, always a cool time, so, um, please join us. Stop by the Discovery Center this Saturday, December fourteenth, from nine AM to one PM, to shop from dozens of local vendors at the Oakdale Indoor Market. It is a great opportunity to do some holiday shopping for gifts, baked goods, and more. Oh boy, we have a lot of events in December. This is one, this is the big one, this is one of the best ones. Our Winter Wonderland event is coming up on Saturday, December twenty-first, from nine AM to one PM at the Discovery Center. It is always packed, it is so well-attended, our residents love it, we hope to see you there. It's definitely one of our most popular events. Activities include horse-drawn hay rides, a petting zoo, a bonfire with smores, there's breakfast provided, holiday face painting, visit with Santa, candy cane hunt, and more. I think they usually have hot dogs, too, lots of meals, come hang out, it's a lot of fun. It is completely free to attend, um, because of a spectacular partnership with local businesses, the Oakdale Area Chamber of Commerce. Um, our Recreation Department does an incredible job setting it up and staffing it, a lot of people involved. We couldn't do it without our, with our partners from the private sector, thank you so much. Um, but Saturday, December twenty-first, nine AM to one PM. Finally, this is our last city council meeting of the year. So on behalf of everyone here at the city, we want to wa, wish all of our residents and businesses um, a very safe, healthy, happy holiday season. We will be back in January, most of us. Jeez, Jake.
I know.
But as always, city staff is here to help you if you need anything in the meantime, reach out to us. We want everybody to have a wonderful holiday season. Check out the holiday lights, City Hall is beautiful, um, it's a, a wonderful time of the year. That's enough of the announcements. Ah, recognition of and appreciation, do we have to do both? Can we do recognition or appreciation of outgoing city council member Jake Ingerbrinson?
I think for you, it'd just be recognition, wouldn't it?
I think it would just be the of. Uh, Jake, this is your final meeting, you are leaving us after six, well, more than six years of service.
Six years and two months.
Well, and Planning Commission before that, we can't discount that service as well. Um, County Commissioner Stan Kurwaski is here with us. Stan, take the mic, it is all yours.
Stan Kurwaski, Washington County Commissioner, District Two, representing Oakdale and seven other cities. It's always an honor to be here, uh, and thanks for fit me in for this recognition and appreciation of Jake Ingerbrinson. Um, because I was up in, uh, Birchwood doing the same thing with their outgoing. And, uh, I did get here and seen the whole meeting, and I concur, you have an amazing staff. Some are some carryovers from my years on the, uh, Oakdale Council. But the new ones are a great job, and, uh, I get to a lot of meetings, and it's still an honor to come here, so great meeting. And that's, uh, the leadership of Mayor and all the council. I really wanna recognize Jake tonight. Uh, I served a combination of sixteen years on Oakdale Council and a few years as mayor, so I appreciate the job you're doing, I think the citizens, it's great to have your family here. I, we have citizens, and you guys won't toot your own horn, but the citizens don't really realize all the extra work you do, the little things that make a big difference. And, uh, I'm gonna keep it kind of the Jake and, and point out some things that made me have some county partnership, 'cause you guys do amazing things as city. I'm a resident here, and if you weren't doing a good job, you'd probably hear from me. Ah, so you're all doing a good job, I think the city's amazing direction. It's the little things, even the, uh, holiday lights. Hey, we didn't do that in our day, so you keep doing things that are better, you know, I'm a big believer, things get better. And, uh, but on some mutual projects that even if you didn't totally believe in, you believe in the mission. Here's an example, uh, and Jake, you can take credit with your council, but it really makes a difference moving the city forward. The goal line, just with it, new Fourth Street Bridge, new Helmo Bridge over ninety-four, those are major investments that would not have happened. And maybe they don't happen if you're not on council. Uh, there's some affordable housing initiatives where maybe our CDA had a role in those, make the city more livable. So it's not always just bricks and mortars and roads and bridges. Century Avenue Corridor, it's a long mission, but at least you, it, there during the start of it. Uh, I'd like to call it ideal avenue, which is I like to call it Ideal Avenue, which is County 13, past the 3M project. The county moved that up to match up with the 3M property. Just the 3M property. The Aldi development, Brian, I'm not sure, but you know, I think the county was an asset to get any entrance there and exit, or however that worked, and the home furniture on 10th Street. We couldn't go to bed on everything you wanted, but those are a couple of great examples. My point is when we partner together, you get so much more done, and the citizens don't really know if it's a county thing or a mutual thing or a city. They just want a good city. And congratulations, Jakes. Even though I consider Jake not only a councilperson, but a good friend, even though we don't agree on a lot, but we agree, we agree to disagree, and you're always...
And Stan, can I make a quick comment on that right now? Because I think, I think there's a very important lesson. And you know, when you say that, like, it's clear, we don't, we're not really in the same place on the political spectrum. I think, you know, you and I both know that. But the thing is, Stan and I are still great friends. And I think that there's a very important lesson to be learned there. So, and we've worked together, and we've worked together well, and you know. But I'll say, I got a few more comments on that, but I'll save those, so.
As long as you realize I'm right on most issues. It's a commissioner's award, and if you know some citizens out there, point in my way that are doing good deeds. We'll do these for individuals, but when you're elected, you're expected to do great deeds, so this is one you're only retiring. So this is a Commissioner's Service Award, and on behalf of a grateful county, the undersigned Commissioner hereby extends recognition and appreciation to Jake Ingebrinson, City of Oakdale Council Member for six years of outstanding service in a support of the Washington County's missions, signed by Stan Karwoski on November 26, 2024. I'd like to present this to you. Maybe get a picture and...
You want me to come up?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, count of three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, my turn. I'll let Jake come back, and I'll head down this way.
Stay up here.
Nope, you hang out up there for a second.
Get in the gavel.
He's gonna do it too.
Stan, did you want your notes?
Is this legal?
Sure. All right. I had to write my notes because I knew there would be no way I would get it all out what I wanted to say if I didn't. So to say that Jake Ingebrinson has brought a unique way to doing this job would be a big understatement. When Jake retires at the end of the year, he will hold quite a few records in Oakdale City Council history. No one in Oakdale's 50-year history has ever mentioned the St. Paul Winter Carnival Medallion Hunt more, or referred to the Brady Bunch, or quoted some obscure hockey movie that nobody ever saw.
A lot of people have seen Slap Shot. I quoted it tonight to Chief Old though.
Not as many as you might think. But while these records are admirable and very likely to stand the test of time, I hope all residents will look to Jake's, Jake's many other accomplishments and contributions to the city. For they have made and will continue to make this city a stellar place to live, work, and play. A full-time career fire department, a police department near all-time high staffing levels, if not all-time high, a record-breaking property value tax base, cutting Oakdale's debt consistently, maintaining a responsible tax levy. None of these achievements came without challenges. Tough financial decisions, navigating a global pandemic, civil unrest practically in his own front yard, the occasional dust-up and tense language with fellow elected officials, yours truly included. But at the end of it all, Jake's commitment to doing the public's work, the work voters sent him here to do, always shined through. I also want to thank Jake's wife Sarah, his daughter Peyton, and his boys Logan and Lyndon, joining us tonight. To dedicate the time necessary to do this job means he wasn't spending the time, that time with you. Being at your hockey games, your soccer games, at home doing dishes. Sarah, does he do the dishes?
Yeah, right.
Thank you for sharing Jake with this city to do this very important work. One thing I have always admired about Jake is that he sees value in everything. Nothing is worthless. It just hasn't reached its value yet. My favorite example is, gosh, how many times have you tried to buy old decommissioned street signs from Public Works?
I still do it.
The reflective coating is all cracked and faded. They were headed for the shop to be redone or the scrap heap, but you didn't care. You kept asking, and the answer was always no, but you kept asking. Because whether it's sentimental or financial value, Jake sees it and he wants to preserve it. Jake, we have a small token of appreciation for your time here. It is nowhere near enough for all of the hours you've spent making this city the very best it could be. On behalf of Oakdale's residents and businesses, thank you. And I genuinely hope you leave here knowing that you did this job your way, the Ingebrinson way, and Oakdale is a better place because of it. One final thing. I also have a gift for you tonight. I have had the honor of working with you longer than anybody, all the way back to our Planning Commission days.
You know, that might actually be like literally longer than anybody, even in like work work.
I don't know if that's good or sad.
But you know, I've owned it.
I want you to know how much I have valued your contributions, your opinions, whether I agreed with them or not, but most importantly, your friendship. Also, thank you for being a great sport when I would crack a very small joke at your expense. I only do that with people I respect. All of that said, it feels only right that you get to leave here tonight with a little piece of the Ingebrinson way.
No way.
What? That is awesome. Where is it? Don't I have to pay for that?
No.
We're gonna go put this for the Hummel side.
Will you qualify this, please?
Okay, Dan, I saw your name, right?
That's what I was saying.
It's a button H. It's in between the I and G.
I like to go with way.
All right, count of three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Council family coming on? Sure, ask your one big group, and then we get your family, and who would like to hold the tray? There you go. How's it going, Ed? Let's get everybody, and then council can step out with your family, and then we'll be council. Come on, Suzie, come here.
Try not to cry.
You're gonna do a lot of dishes now.
All right, count of three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Ingebrinson family, and then we'll get one with just council.
One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
All right, just council. I'll come to the other side.
All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, back to our seat.
Council members, would anybody like to make individual comments before we give Jake the final word?
I know, I do.
Suzie, take it away.
If I don't cry. Tell him to make it as short as it can. But I really enjoyed my time working with you. You're one of the most unique individuals I've met in a long time.
I'll take that as a compliment.
It is. It is. I love your family. They're beautiful. And I know we had our ups and we had our downs, but you know, what was really cool is we could work through everything that we went through, and we still remain friends. I'll never forget you, and I hope that you stay in contact because I do love you very much.
Thank you. I love you too, for what it's worth.
I know.
Mine are probably the shortest comments, but Jake, I think it's so exciting to be so welcomed into a group of people, and the time that you spent with me to sit down and have coffee and to lead me and guide me and make sure I knew how you felt about some future decisions. I just, I value that so much.
Gary, you'll get that too.
I value that so much, how you're willing to reach out, and I didn't have much time to build much of a friendship with you, but man, I respect you, and it's, it's really cool to hear person after person say that there were disagreements, but through it all, you remained friends, and I think that's a testament to your character. So I wish I had you around longer.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, and to you and Gary, I'm always just phone call away, and I will always tell you what I really think.
I know that to be true.
Whether you want it or not.
Yes, correct. So, but thank you, Carrie.
Awesome. Yeah, and Jake, two years ago, before I was even elected, you gave me some really good advice, right? That if you're gonna do this, you gotta do it right. You gotta show up. You gotta spend the time. So I showed up to every single workshop meeting, every council meeting from August until the election day, and it served me so well in the process. So yeah, we, there's been a lot that I've learned, and there's been more than a few topics that we've discussed where I would sit and think, what would Jake say about this? What would Suzie say? What would Kevin say? Because we've got to think from different lenses, right? And it makes us better. And the fact that we disagree makes the city better because we fight for the things that we care about. So appreciate all the time that you put into it, and outside of losing a bunch of money on pull tabs, mostly good memories.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll keep that on the lowdown.
It's an investment in the kids.
It was about the kids. Correct. Thank you, Jake.
Yeah, about helping charity.
Right.
Jake, the floor is yours.
All right. Well, it's funny you mentioned attendance. You know, that was kind of the first thing, you know, when I came into this, and it goes back to in high school, I played hockey with this kid named Corey Pikarski. Corey's sister is the only student in the history of the state of Minnesota with perfect attendance, K through 12. So in fact, I had to call Corey today and confirm that my memory about that was right, and it was. And I told him I might give his sister Jill a shout out tonight, so. But I've always thought ever since then, and that was in 1995 that she graduated. I've always thought that attendance, if somebody can pull that off, you've got no excuse not to show up if you commit to something. And with that, just a couple of fun facts. This will be, this is the 151st meeting since I was elected in November of 2018. I've missed four meetings out of those 151. That's 97.4% attendance. I think it's, I think that's certainly respectful. So you know, that was kind of my big thing coming in, showing up, doing the work. You know, and I talked, think a little bit about my legacy. I think the most important thing, and it's not just me, but as a council, the most important thing we've done is hire our city administrator. Of anything that I think we've gotten right, I think we got that the most right. You know, Chris, I still remember sitting right down there at your interview and you telling us, I'm gonna come in here and I'm gonna build a staff that's gonna serve us well. And to say, I mean, I can't, it would be an understatement to say that you've succeeded at that. It's just, it, you know, you're by far the best leader I've ever worked with. So thank you. You know, I also think every time I drive through that Willowbrook neighborhood or by it, you know, that process had already started when I got on the council. But you know, I was involved in enough of it where I'll always take a lot of pride in that. And it's, it's a pretty cool place. So, and also thinking a little bit more beyond that, you know, I wish we could have gotten a little further along on the police, on the police expansion project. But you know, we got it paid for. That's the big thing. And then obviously, the Public Works facility, that, you know, I think, I think our Public Works staff, people, our residents aren't gonna feel that impact the way it actually is going to impact them. You know, and I think Stan pretty well laid a lot of it out. I was gonna name more, but I don't need to now. I'd just be redundant at that point. So. You know, and obviously, Sarah, Peyton, Logan, Lyndon, you guys are the loves of my life, and we're gonna go home tonight, and you guys are gonna completely have your dad and husband back. Do you guys know that? Well, I'm your mom's husband. So I've just, I've tried to keep this short, Peyton, but, but you guys, thank you. Whether our residents know it or not, they owe you guys a debt of gratitude too. You guys have sacrificed a lot for me to be up here. And thank you for that, but you know, now I'm gonna be at hockey, and I'm gonna be at everything else. So, and there's no missing it because of city council. So thank you, guys. I would like to thank city staff. You guys have been amazing, both past and present. You know, I, if I name a few, I feel like I have to name everybody, so I'm not gonna throw out any, any names, but thank you guys all. You guys have all been awesome. You've been respectful, even when you run into people that I know and my name comes up. And I will, I will throw out Andy's name on that one. So, you know, and, but, but all joking aside, thank you. And I don't know how a city in the state of Minnesota could have a better staff than we have right now. So. Also, I want to throw out a special shout out to police and fire, particularly during the George Floyd protests and riots. How we avoided any major issues, I, to this day, frankly, I don't know. But it was due to the leadership and decision-making of Kevin, Chief Sullivan at the time, and you know, Chief Newton at the time was on the scene, basically, you know, talking to the protesters, making sure. I saw it with my own eyes, and I just, you know, to my grave, I won't forget that, and I won't forget you guys for that. I want to thank the Oakdale Chamber. I think they're a very underrated asset in this city. I kind of crapped the bet a little bit not coming to their meeting when I was on the agenda, but that, I'll save that apology for the next meeting. But, but you know, I, that organization is a key, key to the city, and I hope it continues to grow. Thank you to my council colleagues. You know, we've butted heads, all of us, but it's been great to work with you guys, and it's been fun. It really has been fun. Even the tough times have been fun. So, and you know, I, I just thank you guys. And thank you for everything tonight, too. And Kevin, you really came through. So thank you. Also want to thank Stan. Also want to thank Stan. You know, your friendships meant a lot to me. My, my favorite Stan moment is I was sitting on the couch in my office and him and I were screaming at each other about the thousand feet of path up off of 50th Street. The county path that they want the city to pay for. So you're not always right. But, but, but Stan, but that, but that, that was a testament of our relationship and that we can kind of tell each other how it is. Try to tell each other who's right, you know, try to convince each other who's right. But it was, I actually enjoyed that. So I wanted to bring that up to you. But and I will, I will play in the Chamber Golf Tournament with you next year too, Stan. So but thank you. And you've done a great job representing Oakdale Woodbury. And you'd always have my vote, so. Last, I want to thank our residents. It's been the honor of a lifetime to serve. I always recommend running unopposed when possible. But you know. But, but thank you to the residents for having faith in me the second time around. I earned it there, but it has been the honor of a lifetime. And I really, really believe that Oakdale is better now than the day I took the oath. So I'm always gonna remember that and take pride in that. And I would like to leave by giving four words of wisdom to all current and former, or all current and future Oakdale City Council members. Don't screw this up. You got it.
Do you want to pay the bills one last time?
Sure.
Yeah. All right, claims roster in front of us, November 27th through December 12th. 2.89 million and change. Jake, make the motion.
Make a motion to approve claims as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bills are paid. Jake, bring us home.
Nope.
Come on. Ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, or I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Meeting adjourned. I had to do it.
You have to. You have to. Let's go have some dessert. We have an EDA meeting, so maybe we start that at nine?
Yes.
Yep.
Nine, quarter to.
Well, we want to do.
Oh, are we coming back here?
Take some stuff now while people are here. And then we'll come back and crank out the EDA.
Hard to believe it's over.
Let me talk to Chris about that. I don't think.